Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October the 12th, 2021. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. You can see this on live stream at huntcounty.net and be in person at our current County Commissioner Court meetings. This time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life. As we make the decisions today for the people that we serve, may we do it in a righteous way. Give us patience, understanding with each other as we do make these decisions. We ask you to continue blessing this great country that we live in. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll call roll. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Straight, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from September 28th, 2021, regular session in front of you. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public testimony. At this time, we'll have public testimony here in the courtroom. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff that may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some of the course of response. Any of those that are watching online, you can go to huntcounty.net webpage and click on the banner for comments. And if you want to type in a comment to be read to the court or put a phone number in, we'll call you at an appropriate time and you'll be able to address the court on any issue. Is there anybody here wishes to speak today? No one wishing to speak. Daniel, there's nothing on, no comment yet, is there?
Yeah.
Okay. Move on to new business, consent calendar. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, a proclamation for Domestic Violence Month for October 2021 in Hunt County. And at this time, I'll read the proclamation. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas domestic violence is a great evil and an offense against human dignity and where it occurs, homes are transformed into places of danger and despair. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of coercion and control in intimate relationship where one person uses violence to gain power and control over their partner. And whereas domestic violence includes not only physical abuse, but also mental abuse, emotional abuse, financial abuse, isolation, and sexual violence. And whereas people of all ages and in all stages of their lives are victims of domestic violence. In the Hunt County Sheriff's Office, Hunt County Courts, County Attorney's Offices, Greenwood Police Department, and Fire Department continue to work with agencies such as Women in Need. And whereas despite our best efforts, many lives are lost to this tragedy of the American home. And whereas we encourage domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victims organizations such as Women in Need. And whereas by working together, we continue to build a society that respects the life and dignity of every person, offering relief from abuse, bringing hope, and healing to those affected, and punishing the perpetrators of this heinous crime. And now therefore be it proclaimed that October 2021 be declared Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in Hunt County, Texas, our community will remember and honor the lives of those lost to domestic violence and celebrate those individuals that have broken the cycle of violence, and official witness thereof the 12th day, October 2021. Any comments from the public?
Good morning. Judge Stovall, Commissioners. My name's Alan Heath. I'm pleased to be the Executive Director of Women in Need. I've been on the job now for six weeks.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. And I really just wanted to come up briefly and thank the court for making this proclamation. This is a very important aspect of obviously what we at Women in Need do, and it's very, very important that we have the type of partners that we have in our community here. And I thank you for your support. That's all I have to say today. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of action item number one.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Action item number two, introducing Mary Shockley as the new Hunt County FCH Extension Agent in cooperation with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service.
Morning, Judge Stovall and the Commissioners. It's great to be here this morning to introduce Mary Shockley to you all as a candidate for the family and community health position here at the County Extension Agent. A little bit about Mary. Mary was currently the teacher and educator, protocol instructor for June Shelton School and Evaluation Center for the past three months. She's also worked as an early childhood educator, diversity and inclusion facilitator at White Rock Montessorial School for 10 years. Her education background includes a BS degree from University of North Texas in psychology and also a master's education specializing in urban education from SMU. Some other experiences that she has or expertise she has is strong collaboration skills, education mentor, instructional coach, effective parent in community partnerships, professional development presenter, and a host of other type skills that Mary would be an excellent County Extension Agent for our family and community health position here. I had a great opportunity to visit with her on a couple of occasions. I had the opportunity to have her come visit with the staff here in the county and also visit with Commissioner Hutchinson. And there was a great visit, a great opportunity for us to have her want to become work for us. And so I'm pleased to introduce Mary to you all. She will actually start in the county on November the 15th. For new agents who come into our system who is unfamiliar with the extension, we put them through a first step program where it's a training program for a little over a month, about 30 days, in a neighboring county. And that's something the extension pays for, for her to just mentor, kind of just shadow and be like an intern for a whole month, see how the extension office functions and works, and look at all aspects of the extension program. So we're going to have her in two, possibly three counties doing that opportunity to see two of their different counties work in that month, period of time. But she'll be ready to go November the 15th to be the agent here. So we're pleased to introduce Mary Shockley to you all.
You bet. Thank you. I assume one of those internships will be at College Station so she can get a little touch of being an Aggie. I thought we required Aggies only.
Well, no, we hired some other.
Oh, my goodness.
Not just all Aggies. We have to mix them up.
Well, I'm a little prejudiced, you know. I like to.
I grew up in the area.
You did watch that ballgame the other night, didn't you?
Well, you got to be good. My wife graduated from Mississauga, so you've got to be, it's got to be, got to be good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see y'all.
Welcome.
Also, I want to just make an announcement.
Sure.
Our conference that we have every year for CEUs for judges and commissioners is December the 2nd, which is the first Thursday. That's going to be at The Rock in Suffer Springs. I'm meeting with a couple of commissioners, hopefully in about a week. Commissioner Hutchins is going to be on the planning group to come with a couple of topics for the conference. So a saved today card should be coming out within the next two weeks or so to everyone.
That's the one like we had last year due to COVID, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Same place. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right. Action item, action item number three, the Limble CMMS Modern Mobile Friendly Maintenance Software. Chris, you going to come educate us about this? You know, we don't like technology up here, so.
Well, I won't tell you anything about technology if I can help you. We have around 30 buildings to maintain in the county, and we get about 40 work requests per day. And we've got four maintenance technicians, so that's about 10 little jobs a day for each of them. So these jobs range from replacing light bulbs, temperature adjustment, sewer stoppage, AC failures, and so forth. And about 40 of these, of these 40 requests, about five a day are for emergency work orders. These can be anything from the AC in the 196th court stops working, stopped up sewers, loss of power, and so forth. We desperately need a system to manage our work and our resources. And we've looked at several of these systems, and we have settled on one that's by the Limble Company. It's tailored to organizations like hospitals, school districts, cities, and counties. This system would allow us to organize and prioritize these work requests and emergency work orders as we receive them. It will assign tasks to individual workers based on their availability. We'll be able to monitor when each task is started and when that task is completed. And when a task is completed, then that worker will automatically receive his next task to We'll be able to establish completion dates for these tasks more accurately than we do now, and we'll relay these to the quester in a timely manner. If the schedule changes for an item, we'll call and let them know that it's going to be a day later or whatever else. We'll be able to build schedules for preventative maintenance, things like servicing 160 AC units that we have, repair and replacement of all the equipment and fixtures in 120 restrooms that we have, and inspecting and repairing all the roofs. We'll be able to do this on a scheduled basis so that our equipment doesn't get damaged because the filters hadn't been changed at the right time and so forth. We'll also be able to create an inventory of materials and spare parts for all our jobs, and the system will update the inventory every time a single item is used on a job. And then it will tell us when it's time to buy more of that particular item. And the system will tell us when to hire outside contractors before our workload exceeds our in-house capability so that we don't get stacked up and can't perform. The Limble Company will provide the software and six seats for myself, Liza, and our four maintenance technicians. We'll be able to access the system from computers or from our cell phones. This is a great advantage because the guy working in the jail can find the part he needs in the inventory, he can make the repair, he can log it in as completed, and then the system will assign his next task right there in the cell he's in, tell him where to go Limble, this company, will send an expert to help us set up this system and to train us on the system. The cost of the system is about $420 a month, which is about $5,040 per year due at the beginning of each year. We believe this investment will improve our ability to serve Hunt County in every way. So, questions?
I've got a couple of questions. First question is, so if we have a problem with air conditioner or whatever the issue is, do they call your office and then somebody there enters it into computer-based?
Yes. Liza will be doing that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then from there, does it, is it sent out, you said, to cell phones, to the employees that work on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And all of that will happen in real time, and hopefully we'll have, we can monitor all of that that's taking place, but it's going to be done by the computer, and that's a big deal.
May I ask you this? What about the security in reference? Is there a security needed as far as with Brandon and all them, or what?
I don't think, I don't think so.
I would think we ought to ask him.
Yeah.
Because if we're giving this information to that company, I believe we need to look into that aspect of it as far as, as far as safety, as far as what we're required to do in reference to all of our records and stuff anyway.
Okay.
Well, we won't be giving our information to them.
No.
They won't be hosting it, will they?
No, no.
We'll be hosting it here, so they won't have our information.
Right. We'll own the system, but they won't be able to look at it or do anything with it. We'll call.
Okay, so this is going to be in-house.
Absolutely.
System, just like my computer down there is in-house.
Right.
In which we have to have all that down there. I would check on this.
Oh, I will, sure.
Because my computer down there is also under the whole thing, and it's sitting there by itself.
Yeah. Well, we'll sure check with Brandon.
But you're saying they, they, you're talking about the secretary that's pointed in, all, nationality will be renting, will be renting the stuff, and your secretary will be putting it all in and then taking it off as everything's done. She would be monitoring.
Yeah.
Everything. So that company actually is not involved in it after y'all get the training correct.
Right.
But yet they'll have access to it.
I don't think they will, but they might.
I don't know why they would.
I would think they would.
Huh?
I would think they would.
No, they wouldn't. Why would they need it? The only time that they'd ever have to do something, if they had to come in online or something to, you know, look, if we had a malfunction in the software.
Yeah.
They'd be involved, but they wouldn't be looking at anything else.
Right.
But if they were going to come in and do something as far as with their software, they'd have to coordinate with Brandon to be able to come into our system.
That's what I'm saying. Brandon needs to be.
I agree.
But they're not going to have free access.
No.
They can't come in when they want to. They'll be able to come in when they're allowed in.
I don't know. I mean, I actually don't know.
I do. I mean, that's exactly the way it works.
Okay. What else?
It seems like, oh, you're the first one.
You said you're getting about 40 calls a day on average.
Yeah.
Of repair, and you're taking care of about 30 of them, it sounds like?
No, we're taking care of all of them.
You're getting everything?
Yeah, we have to, which means sometimes we're here at night and so forth.
The four users, is that all budgeted position or just the current four?
That's the current four we have. We have another position budgeted, but we haven't found anybody yet.
So we'll have another cost when that seat gets filled?
Yeah, yeah.
Minimum?
Yeah. Six of them.
I mean, that's what I, you know, I was thinking that it sounds like you need help, not somebody to help organize things. It sounds like you need another worker.
Well, we might need, we do need another worker.
We'd make better, we might can hire another. We got one budgeted, you can hire one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We need another guy to come in to fill a spot.
We got budgeted $48,000 or $9,000 for a position. We can't fill it?
Yeah, been trying for a year and a half, but.
Chris, it seems like a great software, even if we add more people.
Yeah.
If, the point is it is increasing our productivity and efficiency.
Oh, man.
And not as planned better than, I mean, it's almost more important if we have more people.
Yeah.
For that reason. I didn't, maybe it's in here in the pack and I missed it, but just tell me, what's the cost on this?
It's annually, it's about $5,040 for everything, and we pay that at the beginning of each year.
That's an annual subscription?
Yes.
Cost?
What about cancellation if we don't like it?
We can cancel it anytime. I don't know that we'd get our money back if we'd already paid them, but we pay for a year in advance, but we can sure drop it at any time.
But worst case scenario is 10 months from now, we don't like it, we don't renew.
We don't renew it, yeah.
It's not a long-term contract.
Yeah, and this, like any complicated system, computerized system, the whole key to this is doing what we're supposed to do with it. It won't think for us, and if we don't train everybody and everybody doesn't do everything they're supposed to do at the right time, then we've made a bad investment. But we've got to do something because right now it's just pandemonium, all the time trying to keep up with everything.
I can only imagine.
Yeah.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Have y'all checked with any of these other people to see how they like it?
Other customers?
Yes.
No, we've read a lot of testimonials online, and it seems to be very popular and so forth. But we can sure do that. We're not about to write a check for it right now, but we sure can.
I would like to, I'm being sincere. I believe it'd be good if it's feasible.
Yeah.
Okay? I believe it'd be good, but I would like for you to check with the other people that have had it and see what their pros and cons are.
Yeah.
Also, I'd like to find out from Brandon, you know, just, you know, what, you know, what type of security or what, if there's any security or whatever before we go further.
Right.
I mean, I'm sincere. Anything to help y'all be able to do your job, I believe is important. In fact, they even mentioned about getting someone else. I'm sure that you need someone else.
We do.
Okay. But like I said, I would like these questions answered before we move further on it.
Okay. Well, we can sure make a bunch of calls. They've offered us a list of places around here that use the software.
Cool.
Yeah. All right.
Another question.
Yes.
I assume this is coming out of the maintenance budget?
It's going to come out of the other repair and maintenance line item, or that's where we put the money for it.
But it is in the maintenance budget.
Yes, yes.
I just want to make sure because a lot of times it comes time to pay for it and that's been forgotten about, but I just want to clarify that.
It's plugged in.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Sounds like a great system.
I think so, too. Can't wait.
Any other questions? All right, so I guess with the comments, we want to table it and take action on it next meeting and give Chris time to make some calls and check with Brandon.
I sure will.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll table that for the next agenda. Excuse me. Action item number four, the back pay for Hunt County pharmacist Sheila Dawson for the months of March, April, May of 2021. I think this is to clean up, you know, I think we talked about the pharmacist before. We had a hard time trying to find one. We finally talked to her, and we got her for the remainder of some period, and then we dropped the ball and didn't get it renewed and failed to pay her for March, April, May, even though she was still providing the services. So I entertain a motion that we get her her back pay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number five, the approval of Hunt County Fire Protection Agreement contracts.
There's been several contracts signed, but the certification effort's not going to start until next week, so those are going to come to the court at the next meeting, at least three of them as the plan, hopefully all of them. So we can talk more, a little bit more about some issues related to that in executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Are we going to need to come back out and take action?
No.
No. All right, so we'll just continue to keep this on the agenda going forward until we get them all approved?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Action item number six, the fiscal year 2022 resolution for the Indigent Defense Grant Program. Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, the formal adoption of the Hart Inter-Civic Verify Voting System per Section 123.001 of the Texas Election Code. Jeanne, you want to lighten us on what a great, great election machines we have? And by the way, how did the demos go? Did a lot of people show up?
Excellent. We had a great turnout.
Good.
Yeah. It's actually continuing. This is actually the final step in the purchase of the new Hart Verity voting system. Since Commissioners' Court approved the purchase in June, each piece of the system has been delivered. The acceptance testing, they've gone through acceptance testing with a Hart representative. Staff training has been completed, which was multiple days. The election workers for the November election have been trained, and public hands-on training with a sample election is available, has been available and will continue to be throughout early voting in the Voter Administration Office. We have those, we have a set of equipment set up so that if anyone walks in off the street, they can actually take part in a sample election, so they can do hands-on before they actually vote in the November election. I would like to mention that both party chairs have been an active part of this process and want to take the opportunity to thank them as well as the judge and the Commissioners' Court for your support of this project. Pursuant to Section 123.001 of the Texas Election Code, I'm requesting the court adopt the Hart Verity voting system for all future elections in Hunt County.
All right. Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing a great job, Jeanne. Action item number eight, the monthly treasure report for August 2021. Brittany, any questions that we need to get or entertain a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, action item number nine, the inter-local agreement binding between Fort Tree and Hunt County in regards to road maintenance repairs. Daniel?
That item's going to need to be discussed in executive first.
Okay. All right, so we'll come back and take action afterwards. Okay. Action item number 10, the order for redistricting of political boundaries of Hunt County. Commissioners, you've seen the letter, and I assume y'all all got the same letters and emails that I received that will be required to redistrict our Commissioners' precinct districts due to the variance of over 10%. I think we were 23.9.
27.
27%. And anything over 10, we had to redistrict, so we will be doing redistricting, so this is the order for the redistricting process. Entertaining motion for approval?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
In reference, since we're going to have Tac come in?
No, Tac's not coming in. Allison Bass is.
Who?
Allison Bass.
Oh, Allison Bass.
Yeah, they are legal representatives for the redistricting process.
They're going to come in and present a map and stuff like that the way they have it. Am I correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, did?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Upgrade of approximately 5,850 feet of County Road 1063 from rock to oil sand in precinct Upgrade of approximately 5,850 feet of County Road 1063 from rock to oil sand in precinct one, county's expense.
Judge, make a motion to approve this upgrade at the county's expense?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 12, the upgrade of approximately 1,433 feet of County Road 4115 from dirt to rock at the county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this at county's expense?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 13, the upgrade of approximately 6,028 feet of County Road 4204 from rock to oil sand at the county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this at county's expense?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 14, the upgrade of approximately 3,833 feet of County Road 4205 from rock to oil sand in precinct four, at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this at county's expense?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Upgrade of approximately 2,334 feet of County Road 4802 from dirt to rock at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this at county's expense?
Second.
Excuse me, got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 16, upgrade of approximately 1,845 feet of County Road 4819 from rock to oil sand at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this at county's expense?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. You know your precinct lines changing, don't you?
This is, this is on the edge.
Action item 17, the requesting of geotechnical drilling for the investigation of soil borings along County Road 1025.
Your honor, items 17 through 25 are essentially identical requests except for along different county roads. I asked Daniel if we could approve them all at once.
So items number one through?
Seventeen through twenty-five.
You want seventeen through twenty-five?
Yes, and those are all in precinct one, but that would be the identical request for geotechnical drilling for the investigation of soil boring along county roads 1025, 1026, 1043, 1088, 1089. And 1089 again, multiple locations, 1098, 1108, and 1132.
All right, so that's a motion to approve the drilling for all of those roads?
Yes, sir.
May I have a discussion?
Sure.
Sure.
Understand that these people are going to come here and do these core samples on every one of these roads. I have no problem them doing it, but on the other hand, if you'll notice, every time somebody goes, comes over and does surveying, we end up with a podo right in the middle of it. I would extend this, I would allow them to do it with the normal stipulations that they repair it back. The normal stipulations that they repair all these.
Are they actually drilling in the road or in the ditch? And it's for the pipeline?
I believe so.
It's for a pipeline, so are they, do we know if they're actually drilling in the ditch or in the road? Do you want now?
Believe it's in the right of way.
In the right, that's what it say, I mean.
But either way.
It says along it, so I don't know what that means, if it means it's in the road or means it's just in the right of way.
Either way, I would agree that with the motion includes a stipulation, normal stipulations that it be returned to its previous condition.
Okay.
Your honor, also, in actuality, in reference to this, they're going to do core samples in reference, put this water line to my knowledge.
That's correct.
Okay, in reference to that, we would have to have a contract. Have you had anything in reference, they're doing this drilling and all this for, to find out what's needed. Will we also be doing a contract with them, just like we would be in reference to a city having to do with water coming from Tewaupnee? In reference to that?
I think they're just gonna be crossing these roads, I don't think they're going along them, are they?
They're gonna be doing damage to roads for the simple reason they're gonna be using our roads to go across country and all the other aspects that we've allowed, you know, as far as contract, that they'll put all of our roads, what they tear up possibly, you know, the pipelines that we've had go through. We've always protected ourselves in reference to agreements of if they tear up the road, they'll fix it as such and or put up, you know.
But don't, they'll have to come to court before they do anything else though, correct, besides the plant?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, we need to be able to have a contract with them in reference to it. We can give them permission to do these core samples and, because that's not going to tear up the road. But when they start coming in there with that heavy equipment doing so, we're gonna have to have a contract with them in order to do any damage as we have all these other ones.
Well, that's fine, but that's not what we're asking for today. All we're asking to do is drilling today. When they, when they get ready to cross it, then we'll deal with that.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just wanting to find out if we've been approached.
No.
Didn't, thank you, thank you.
I assume they're doing this to find out if this is even the direction they're going. Normally, when they're doing testing, they're trying to decide where their routes are going to be. So we got a motion, I hear a second?
Yes.
Yeah, we had a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 26, I assume we can do the same thing on this one. Twenty-six, request of geotechnical drilling for the investigation of soil borings along County Road 4618, 4722, 4823, 4826, 4903.
I'll make a motion to approve this request for County Road 4618, 4722, 4823, 4826, 4903, and the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 31, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3223 and Precinct 3.
I make a motion, we allow this construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 32, the request to construct electric power distribution facilities across County Road 31, 32, and Precinct 3.
I make a motion, we allow this construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 33, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3505 in Precinct 3.
Make a motion, we allow the construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 34, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities across County Road 3521 and Precinct 3.
Make a motion, we allow this construction with the normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 35, preliminary plan of Kennedy Estates, Precinct 4, Brian?
Guys, this is actually one that was submitted to me a while back. They'd been working on a drainage plan, which I sat on your desk this morning. Had every intention of giving that in the packet, sorry. Everything on this looks normal, drainage plan looks good, it's been approved, and this is just for the preliminary plat.
This is actually their second drainage plan, is that correct? They got one that required a whole lot of crazy stuff that.
That's right.
We didn't really agree with, and neither the developer, so he went and hired another firm. And this seems to make a whole lot more sense for.
Right, right.
What they're trying to do, and with this plan, they're losing a lot where the other plan they weren't going to because it didn't seem, like, didn't seem to make any sense that they were creating a problem that didn't need to be created, and they were adding a whole lot of work to him that didn't appear to need to be done because they were requiring a bunch of stuff across the 10-acre lots he's selling, which would make any sense because they're not developing them and they can't develop them any further because of the way they're cut out. So he went and got another firm to do it, and they eliminated a lot, and they've got a lot better plans, seems like to me.
And took care of all the, all the problems. They also have some lot detailed grading plans according to home sites on this grading plan, which we'll speak about again in a second on the final.
Yeah, the one you're looking at, Brian and I have talked to him, or Brian's talked to him, him and I have met and gone over it. And probably what we're gonna end up doing on this one is having attach this engineering drainage analysis with the plat to be recorded. So that that puts the public on notice of what they're gonna have to do on their lots. There are some finished floors on two or three lots.
Two lots have finished floors.
Finished floors on it, but all the lots have some designation of where the drainage has to be around the pad of the house to not block water flow from one direction. Part of it flows from the ditch back across the property, another part of it flows into the ditch and the property. So depending on what lot they're on, they've got to have drainage around their lot in a certain way, so.
And they're cutting that north ditch also, correct?
Along the road.
They're gonna have to cut, cut the road ditch as well, correct? That was, that was one of the stipulations of this new drainage plan is they.
Yeah, they're widening it.
They wanted to adjust that ditch a little bit along the road, and they also added a spillway on an existing pond, so.
I believe it says it's gonna be a three-foot flat bottom ditch now along there with some side slopes that I can't read on that small front.
There's not a whole lot of difference to, as to how the ditch is now. They're not having to change a whole lot on it, they're just gonna make sure that that water flows down the road.
And tree lines and they'll clean it up, put it back.
They're not damaging that brand-new road, are they?
No, no, they are, they're fully aware of any damaging incurred on that road is gonna be prepared by them, so.
This is really a good example of our new subdivision rules, because we won't record the plat and he can't sell a lot until after we accept all the construction. If he damaged the road and he doesn't repair it, we don't record the plat.
Because this was the capital improvement road from last year.
Right, right. But now that we're not recording the plats up front, we got, we got, we got control of it now.
That's right.
And so he'll have to get all the drainage done, he'll have to fix the spillway. If it, if the spillway already there, they're gonna have to fix the.
I think there's already one there, I think they've got it a little bit more.
Worked.
Engineered, structured, if you will, just to flow the volume of water.
I really haven't had a chance to look at, but they'll have to do all of the drainage work, clean the right of way, fix the ditch, make sure Commissioner Harrison can go inspect it and make sure his road's not damaged. And then at that point, we can finalize the plat, even though we'll approve it, we won't sign and record it until it's been accepted. We'll come back in and accept it.
Well, and with the, you know, this is just the preliminary, of course, there's nothing to sign or record on the preliminary plat.
Right, so we just need approval so we can move forward to the, towards the final plat.
Correct.
Entertaining a motion for approval, action item 35.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and we're gonna strike 36, is that right?
Let's, let's put 36 off until the next court.
We'll just strike it for now, and we can put it back on the agenda if we need to next time, if they get all the stuff finished on it.
Yeah, I want to get the final plat all ironed out. They're gonna put a couple of notes on the drainage plan regarding dates of the information. That way they're covered in the future. If someone does go out there and do a bunch of grading, it doesn't come back on the engineers, so.
Well, let's strike it for now, but in case they don't get all that done and back to us. We can always add it back to the agenda. Action item number 37, the final plat of Green 36 Edition, Precinct 2.
This is one, the. The estate is dividing this property, all the lots have, have ample frontage. This was an old farm that, that Mr. Green down there had owned for a long, long time. So it's not a developer who's doing this, it is just the, the estate, the property owners of. Everything's got ample frontage, they have been made aware of any kind of permitting of culverts has to go through Tech Stop. That's, it's on an FM road, so they are aware of that, they have spoken with Tech Stop about this.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval?
Make a motion, we approve the Green 36 Edition final plat.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number 38, the final plat of Castillo Edition in Precinct 4.
This one needs some pretty serious road upgrade. It's in a, it's on a dirt road, so it's gonna have to be brought up to rock and into oil sand. There's also gonna have to be discussion with the developer because it doesn't actually contact a paved road. There's a section that he does not own that's, that's dirt already. Couple hundred feet he's gonna have to get from paved road to his, so he's gonna have to upgrade all the way to be able to access this property, so. This is one that can, you know, it can be approved, but until that road's upgraded, it doesn't need to be recorded because he doesn't need to try to sell those lots on a dirt road.
So is he not contacting the commissioner?
So do we need to table this until he contacts the commissioner and make sure we got all that squared away?
It's either or, you can, you can table it or you can approve with the stipulation that the road has to be upgraded before it's recorded or.
Commissioner, that's your choice.
Is it the whole road that needs to be, or is there any prior to getting to his?
It's, it's basically the whole road.
From where to where? I mean, is it a long distance? Making an easier question. Is it fairly long distance you're going?
It's, it's a fairly good distance.
Offside.
Yeah, just for, for this plat, what's in front of it being 450 feet wide, and then the additional 250 or 300 feet to get to it, you know, he's looking at 750, 800 feet of road upgrade just to access the property. The whole road's probably 2,500 feet long, 2,000 feet.
I'd say we table it, in my opinion, until he can.
Okay, let's do that. Yeah, table it.
That way, so we know and make sure he's understanding it and puts the money up.
Yeah, and I have not spoken with, with him personally, so.
Okay, yeah, he needs to, he needs to take care of that financial obligation. All right, so we'll table that till next time? All right, approval accounts payable.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we have no line item transfers, approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion, we approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Daniel, we got any comments online? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under items number?
One and five.
One and five.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we're going into executive session at 10:46. We're going into executive session at ten forty-six.
In camera, so when we get up, we can go back in. We got to take action on...
Item number nine.
Is it nine?
We're back up, Judge.
Back up?
Yes, sir.
All right, it is 11:38. We're back in regular session. We're going to take up action, item number nine, interlocal agreement binding between Poetry and Hunt County in regards to road maintenance and repairs.
Okay, there were three changes to this document that was prepared by Poetry's attorney that were discussed in executive session. Number one is to renumber them so that they're all in sequential order. Number two, at the end of current paragraph six, the phrase would be added, "and the county road crew's other obligations within the sole discretion of the relevant commissioner," which, at least at this point, is Commissioner Strade. And then on the second, item number eight, it would now end with the phrase, comma, "and when it is to be performed with respect to other county obligations."
All right, any questions? Now I entertain a motion for approval of action on item number nine.
Make a motion of approval with three changes.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make those changes and send it back to them today. They're going to vote on it on the 19th, and if they approve those changes, then the commissioner's consi-- or the, I guess, just the judge will sign and then put that into the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, you don't check and see if anybody's had any comments?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We're going out to check.
I didn't think, is anybody out there, Brown? Okay.
No.
There being no public comments online, is there any other business before the court today? Now I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at 11:40.